Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Stowards Council meeting June 14th, 2021. Five thirty PM start time, we're meeting via Zoom due to the COVID restrictions that are currently in place. The first item is approve the agenda. Has any change or additions to the agenda?
Your worship, I just have one thing to add under correspondence, and that is a letter from the Town of New Glasgow regarding the SPCA.
Okay, so that'd be six A. Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve, please?
Don't move.
Moved by Councilor Pence, seconded by Councilor Knight. All those affairs, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Andre Minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. The minutes are next to May 10th, 2021. They're sure the electronics, they're also part of the packages. Are any errors or omissions? Harry, don't have a motion, please?
So move.
Second it.
Moved by Councilor Campbell, seconded by Councilor Pence. All those affairs, I'm saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. I'll move on to our presentation. Like to welcome Denise Michelle Young here this evening, and we look forward to hearing a little bit about the Picto County Cruise Committee. Floor's yours.
Thank you very much. I'm just, can I share my presentation?
Yeah.
Should be good now.
Okay, I'll just, I'll get it up and running here. Just be a moment. All right, all set. That took a few minutes, but I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Picto County Cruise Committee on presenting tonight. It's just, it's a great opportunity and time to provide an update. I realize it's, it has been a couple of years, and of course, the pandemic jumped in the way, so again, that's an interesting time, and we'll kind of dive into a little bit about that and how that looked like over the past year and a half. But, so I'm Michelle Young. I work for the Town of Picto. And I'm Chair of the Cruise Committee. And also joining today is Denise Taylor, who is also a member of the Cruise Committee, and she's, she's here today representing an industry stakeholder, the Museum of Industry in Stellerton. So we're very both happy to join you today. So I'm just gonna dive right into it. Here we have, this is kind of iconic picture of a ship that arrives into the port of Picto, and it's, it's, it's very much a depiction of a welcome that we give every ship that arrives into our county. So what kind of sets us apart as a destination, and we strive to kind of leave, you know, a lasting impact on visitors to our community. What you do kind of extra special, and the extra special thing that we do do is we have a piper out on the mouth of the harbor on a a nice sandy point, and early in the morning, the ship is greeted when they arrive by the loom piper out piping. So it's, it's always interesting to have some feedback on that from each of the companies that visit our region. So I'm, today I'm just gonna go through, you know, who we are as a committee, who sits on the committee, what we've been up to over the past couple of years. Who our partners are within the industry. The impact of the pandemic and a little bit of information on the reopening planning that's been taking place within the greater industry itself. Some highlights of our activities over the past year. And you know what it looks like moving forward, especially coming out of a pandemic that has highly impacted an industry and completely halted it to stop. So just very quickly, we've been meeting as a group since 2007 within our region. And we have representation on our committee from local government, from attractions, the business community and other stakeholders, the, you know, the port itself as well, and, you know, regionally through deans, of course. So you can see there who sits on our community and who represents each organization. Just a little snapshot of, you know, what kind of activity we've had so far, welcoming ships to our county. We started in 2012 where we welcomed our first ship. And since 2012, we've welcomed over 24 ships, and that equals about 61, 6200 passengers and crew. And going forward, we do have visits confirmed already for 2022 and 2023. We have four ships in each year, and we also have a new company that's interested in possibly visiting the port next year. So keeping our fingers crossed for that one, that everything falls into place. Also, here's a couple images of a couple of the ships that we have welcomed. The Pearl Miss there is one that is our, our regular. They've been with us for quite a number of years now and have made multiple stops in the region. Really, the impact of what does, you know, a cruise visit look like when it, when it stops here in our community? So there's definite economic impacts. Here, I just kind of outlined what the spending does look like in different ways. So we have cruise lines themselves. They, they spend on the goods and services, including supplies and fuel and utilities. You know, I, we've made arrangements, actually, you know, the ship might go up to Staples and actually buy all the supplies for their offices onboard, so. Or they might go to the pharmacy here and buy supplies for their medical supplies. So those are the kinds of things that the cruise lines themselves will purchase. Of course, there's the, the cruise traffic themselves, the passengers, and they're out, you know, exploring the port. So, you know, they'll spend on transportation, they might get a taxi, souvenirs, different types of retail expenditures. And as well as crew members, crew members do tend to spend a little more if they have the time in port, and their expenditure is very similar to cruise passengers. And also there is the piece around employment. So, you know, what does it look like at that level? So the port itself, when a ship comes in, we, we employ security, we employ stevedores to handle the ship's lines and so on, and provision the ship. We have local tour guides on each visit. So for example, we have walking tour guides for the Town of Picto. But there's also the tour guides when they, they visit each of the museum properties here in our county. We have local entertainers actually that might board the ship either in Halifax or Charlottetown. And they actually sail with the ship to the next port, which could be Halifax or Charlottetown with a stop in Picto. And they'll entertain onboard the ship as well. We'll have at times shoreside entertainers. Our experiences here over the years, Picto County has so much to offer. I mean, the feedback we've had has been tremendous. And it's been tremendous on the side of like the visitors coming back to the port and talking to people at the port and saying, you know, giving us some great feedback on what they've done, but also the, the companies themselves, like the staff that work onboard the ship, we've had some tremendous feedback from them as well. Who are our partners? So here it outlines some of like our partners that have been quite involved with the Cruise Committee over the past number of years. We've had the Town of Picto, of course, the Business and Marketing Society for the town, County of Picto, Town of Stellerton, Museum of Industry, Town of New Glasgow, Deans, Picto Marine Terminals, of course, and the Customs House Inn, which has been graciously offering their property every year as where we can set up a welcome center, which is close to the pier. We are also a member of the Atlantic Canada Cruise Association and have been since 2007. And I'll kind of dive into that in a minute here, but with that, there is a, a membership fee that goes along with that association. So the Atlantic Canada Cruise Association, it's a membership-based partnership between ports tourism, cruise ships, interests within each of the Atlantic four provinces in Atlantic Canada. Also, there's representation from Akoa from, and from Parks Canada. And really, their mission is to, to lead the growth and cruise in Atlantic Canada as being a destination. And really, what, what that partnership has done for us is really, we, we are part of a larger network within the cruise industry to leverage greater resources, which really we, we can't do on our own. Really, the destination isn't Picto County. It really is Atlantic Canada. We're, we're part of a greater body there. And it's also have provided us with different opportunities, but one of the key ones is our brand alignment with the Atlantic Canada Cruise Association. And in turn, we are part of a larger group of the Canada, New England, which involves New York up to Montreal. So we're a part of that alliance as well with that membership fee. So the last year, of course, the cruise industry was highly impacted. It was a, as you know, it was a complete shutdown early on in the pandemic. And just as of late, over this past winter, Transport Canada has ceased any cruise visitation to Canada until February 28th, 2022. So that came out over this past winter. And really, since then, we're a part of a larger group that has been through planning processes around the safe opening of, of cruise when that happens. So some of the highlights over this past year, and so that was a bit of the doom and gloom, but there are some highlights, and, and we have been a little busy behind the scenes because this actually provided some time for us to, to do some planning and more focused planning around cruise, especially in our area. But it also gave us an opportunity to strengthen our relationships and partnerships with those greater organizations within the industry. So for instance, over this past winter, I had attended a virtual cruise trade show, which was focused on expedition cruising. And expedition cruising is more, it's focused on smaller ships. And those smaller ships kind of getting into more specialized cruises and into smaller ports. So it was a great opportunity, be in a small port, to be a part of that, because we brought back some really great information, but we also made some great contacts with the companies that have smaller ships that, that align very well with, with what we have to offer here in Picto County. Other highlights include this past year is we were invited and participated in regular calls of the Canadian Port Authority's Cruise Committee. So it was a greater cruise committee across Canada that was created through the port authorities in each of the regions. So that included the, the West Coast, the Great Lakes, and then the Eastern Seaboard. As well, we had two committee members, Denise and myself, who participated on a working group to create a small port strategic plan for Atlantic Canada. So it was all the small ports of Atlantic Canada. We developed a strategic plan going forward. And that plan was adopted by the Atlantic Canada Cruise Association just in May this year. And as well, Denise had attended and participated in planning sessions for the overall strategic plan for Atlantic Canada Cruise Association for the next three years. So she was a key member of that working group on that plan. And, and in turn has brought back, you know, lots of great things around the table for us as well. We've also, seems like we've been participating in a lot of planning sessions, of course, online, but we just finished last week another series of planning sessions that was hosted by ACCA and all our partners in Atlantic Canada. And it was focused on the reopening of crews and what that's going to look like. So it was an examination of scenario planning, community relations. So all the kind of key pieces to the puzzle at which time when we start to open cruise again. We've also just recently updated, you know, our information on the port of Picto on some key websites. One of them being the Atlantic Canada Cruise Association website. So we have a listing there. So there's some great information on the port, but also, you know, the experiences on the port and the port specifications. And there's a greater website called Cruise Canada, New England. So it's one that focuses from New York up to Montreal. And we're also listed on that website. So we were doing some updating to content on there as well over this past winter. And as well, we are creating a profile on a platform called Zelia online. So Zelia is kind of the go-to place that the itinerary planners for cruise companies will actually hop on there and do some itinerary planning. So, you know, if they're interested in coming in to Atlantic Canada, they're gonna zoom in on all those, all the ports within our region and kind of pick out what best aligns with their, with their brand. So we're, we're actually loading up some new profile information new to this, this Zelia website. So that's just gonna take place over the next month or two. And yeah, so what does reopening look like for cruise? That's a big question. You know, we've been participating and will continue to participate on planning sessions. And it's with the greater group around the safety and readiness of our, our community here. But it's really gonna be dictated and directed by government bodies that is very regulated. So it's not guidelines we'll be making up. It will be guidelines that will be mandated. We'll have to develop a communication plan for our community. Over the next year, we'll maintain industry contacts with the supply chain within it. That includes our shipping agent who's here with every port visit. We have the cruise companies themselves that we maintain contact with, government, and our service providers within our area. We do hope to develop a master plan for cruise development within Picto County. That has really been identified this past year as a very key focus on our next steps here. We've been really had some really great successes so far within cruise. We've had a company that is visiting us regularly, and they'll, they are, you know, continuing to do so in 2022, 23. We've had a couple odd companies that would just drop in, you know, in the one-off visits. But we really need some, you know, some good planning going forward, because we've come to a point where we've kind of keep doing the same thing and going through the same motions for each visit. So we're really ready right now to take it to the next step. So there's a strong need right now to create that plan. And with that, we have identified need for, you know, a cruise coordinator position. May not necessarily be a full-time position, but somebody that is, is dedicated to the cruise file. Because really, right now, our group is made of community volunteers and some staff. But it's part of a large work plans with ourselves. So there is, we're at the point where we need somebody that needs to be focused on, on cruise. So going forward, we'll, we'll continuously, you know, target the companies that are a good fit for our region. And we'll continuously have a presence at some key industry conferences and trade shows. We've been attending the Canada, New England Cruise Symposium like since at least 10 years now, if not more. And we've had some great successes from that, making contact with cruise companies and which have rolled into visits. And so we'll continue to, to do that. Of course, we'll be a member of ACCA going forward. And we'll also, we've been a very active member with a, the, the Small Ports Working Group for Atlantic Canada. And, and we'll continue to be very active on that group. And opportunities that we see that are coming up is really during this time when we, we don't have ship visits, that we can really examine like our shore excursion offerings and what we are currently doing. And looking at some successes with those, but definitely grow on what we're already doing and, and coming up with some new opportunities through product development here in Picto County. After attending the, the Sea Trade Mission, the Expedition Market and Cruising, which is the smaller cruise ships that have more kind of unique experiences for their cruisers. There, there's huge growth in that market right now. And what we've learned is there's such an increased number of ships coming out over the next couple of years, that they're gonna be looking for those really great experiences, and we're hoping that Picto County is gonna align well with that. There's also great opportunity too with the, the super yacht market. Right now, there's quite, there's a, a strong market of super yachts that actually are going through, sailing past our front door here in the Northumberland Strait, circling around Nova Scotia and going over to Prince Everett Island. So there's some really interesting information around, you know, what that market looks like and the types of expenditures and so on, and and experiences that they might look for. So that has been on our radar for the last, over the last past year. And really, we have, following the pandemic and and probably the ease back into cruising, small ports are gonna be very attractive to a cruise market. We're seen as like Atlantic Canada in general is really seen as a, a safe place that's uncongested compared to other ports, where they can really gather some really great experiences, where they're not feeling like they're crowded and, and feel like safe in, in their travels. So I think, I think coming out of this, that we might see hopefully some growth in, in what we're doing. And of course, we'll encourage some more local partners and stakeholders within the industry to develop what we're already doing. And that's really what I just wanted to kind of review, just giving you a snapshot of what we've been up to over the past year or two, and what the industry has been going through, and some opportunities that we're seeing on the horizon. So if anybody has any questions, I'm very happy to, and Denise as well, would be happy to answer.
Thank you very much for the question. Is there any questions from council? Where did Counselor Lawan go?
I am here.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see. Okay, so there's no question, counsel, I guess. Thank you very much, Michelle, for the presentation. Like I said, it's very informative. We'll, we'll definitely think about it, and if there's no last in there specifically, but we do support the bringing the cruise ships in the Picto Harbor. So anyway, we can help, let us know.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, business rights for the minutes.
Yes, at the last meeting back in May, there was a piece of correspondence from the Town of New Glasgow regarding volunteer fire department covering funeral expenses. So it was directed to Chief Michael Sullivan to look into it. So he did, and the information that this volunteer is asking, that the Funeral Service Association of Nova Scotia is requesting their support to cover costs for funeral expenses. So this letter was simply letting other departments know their intent. Having said that, nothing was submitted directly to the Town of Stellerton. This came through the Town of New Glasgow. So when he, or if he hears any more information, he will certainly let council know.
Thank you. Move on to reports from staff. Five A, Chief Mark Kovacs, Army Police Service, that are at this commission meeting last week, went through the report. Is there any questions on the report? Harry, don't have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the report.
Thank you. Please.
I'll second it, Danny.
Thank you, Counselor Pence. So moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Pence. All those affairs, I'm saying aye.
Somebody had me move it, mute it there.
We're good. So five A, approve, five B, five Chief Michael Sullivan, fire department.
Okay, the report for May has been submitted, and due to COVID, everything's been fairly quiet. The last wave of COVID we've had to alter our normal routine for everything that we do. As a result, we have had to postpone bigger practices. Since then, last Thursday evening was the startup of our practices once again. One change, update the report. Members were asked to wear masks where possible, maintain social distancing. In terms of calls, we answered six throughout the month of May. One medical assist, one animal rescue, motor vehicle accident, fire alarm call, and the other calls for grass fires. And on average, we had 14 members respond. As mentioned, the practices were postponed, but have resumed again. We have permission from the Nova Scotia Fire Chiefs Association, as well as Department of Health to start our practices once again. And in terms of cleanups and fire checks, we're continuing those on a weekly basis, and on average, two to three members participating in that following the public health guidelines. Report was submitted by Mark Fortner, second.
What do you have, Chief? Is there any questions for the chief on the report?
I do. Go ahead, Counselor Pence.
No, I was just gonna move the report. Go ahead, Senator. Or you want to do it on the question?
On the question.
Was that a second from Counselor, or Beth, you may all on?
I'll second it. No. Counselor Knight, second. On the question. Chief, can you elaborate a little bit on the animal rescue operation, please?
Okay, just prior to the startup of our meeting this evening, I was mentioning to Counselor Knight and to Town clerk, we had three calls to that location at the corner of the K Street and King Street, and there's not a whole lot that we can do as a fire department. The safety of our members is top priority as far as I'm concerned. And I went to after a third response to that location, went to the homeowners and requested that they, you know, do something about their cat. Apparently, they're going to try to keep it in their home. The last call that we went to, cat was up that high, that couldn't even see it in the tree. And there's, you know, the safety of the members, as I mentioned, is their top priority. The cat did come down on its own the first two times, and the third call, they had an herb sprout from Kensington area to the tree.
Thank you. And I just want to, you know, expand on that because there was a lot of talk about it in the social media, Facebook. And just want to make sure that the public understand that the fire department has tried everything they could within the safety measures that we are allowed. Unfortunately, we called the New Glasgow Ladder Truck, but they weren't available or able to come in to assist on that rescue. But just want your feedback. Thank you very much, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that, Deputy Mayor. Let's, quick clarification. Are there any other questions for the chief? Okay, so it's a move by Counselor Pence, second by Counselor Lawan, who appears by saying aye. Contrary minded, most carried Nancy, thank you. Five C, Paige Clark, Marketing Communications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My report has been submitted. There are no changes. However, there are a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Mainly the Stellerton app. This was kind of our our first go at really using it. So there's been a few, there were a few issues that were reported into myself. One of those being that there were issues with receiving notifications. Some devices didn't receive the pop up on the main screen. And when I reached out to Citizen Alert, they informed me that that shouldn't be a problem typically. What may have caused that problem would be if someone had the app downloaded, but they hadn't opened the app yet. So if it's just sitting on their desktop, you need to click it open and then that'll ignite that notification system. So they'll then get that pop up. A second one was that alerts weren't showing up on the main screen of the app. So once you actually got into the Stellerton app, they they were in the history section, but nowhere else. And so that, they're quite confident was as a result of the app not being formatted formatted for landscape mode. So they have fixed that issue. So that shouldn't be popping up again. But if it does, they're great to, you know, down. So I, you know, I want to know those things. And the last one was just sound notifications. They weren't going off for some users. We have that set so that when we send out an alert, there is an audible notification with that. But if if a user's phone is set to do not disturb or silent or vibrate, it will not have that sound notification. Vibrate should have a buzz, but that's a that's a personal device setting. So if someone's looking to have those audible notifications, but they, you know, they're having difficulties, they'll have to do that on their own device. And I think that's that's all I wanted to highlight. Are there any questions?
Council have questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Paige, for the report. Couple of questions right quick. The app walkthrough, you said there's going to be a video between you and Noah. So we're going to post that on our social media?
Yes, it will be. It'll be available on social media as well as our website. Something that would be easy to put on our YouTube channel as well.
Perfect. And for the signers, I see that they have arrived. We're just going to wait until the fall to install them. So that's very exciting. And the they will have the Stellerton colors. So we're very excited about that. Thank you for your hard work on that.
I'm very excited.
I do have two questions, though, on the social media policy and on the scam information. I'm a little bit concerned about the scam information coming all the questions directed to Town Hall, which could sometimes inundate our our phone system. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. And for the social media policy, the couple of things that I've read through that requires counselor council approval. I'm not really sure I agree with it. So for example, benefits and have it here. Benefits and fundraiser. I don't think that requires council approval, in my opinion. And birth and death notices, I'm not really sure if that's required as well. These were as example, but I don't think this is we're not going to pick and choose with birth and which death who are going to go on the app, in my opinion. So it's either everyone or no one. So if it's everyone, I don't think the council needs to be involved in that decision. That's my opinion.
That's a good point. I think it's a cool idea if we had births and deaths announced on the app, especially births. It's kind of something missing in our community. A lot of people have trouble finding out that information. Everyone loves to hear about births. So I'm just wondering if how are we going to let people know to contact us to let us know if it's done or not?
I hadn't thought that far ahead. If I may, there is a, there is a policy that we have with like a certificate of recognition for someone who's celebrating a certain milestone. And that is something that is in that policy as well about births. So if someone chooses to wish to announce that, they can do that through that policy.
Now, the other question to follow up on this is that this is not going to come out as an alert, correct? No. Okay, thank you. So yeah, I don't know what council feels about those things that I've just mentioned. I, for one, not, I don't think it should be a council decision to approve birth and death notices on the app or fundraiser benefits, tell you the truth.
How's the rest of council feel about that?
I think that's what Simon's saying here, from what I can gather, Danny. He's speaking very broadly. I think it's something that we should sit down as a council and discuss before we make a decision on it.
On the policy itself, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can put this back on the community, the whole agenda for the end of June for more discussion.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Is okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So then the other concern for you, Paige, would be actually for the clerk as that would be your department that would be receiving all the calls for the scam information. Are you comfortable with that? Us receiving calls from all residents when there's one email or one phone call starting getting to all of our residents?
We don't have the capability to, I mean, the police get a lot of calls. What what normally would happen is that the chief of police can certainly inform us that if you can send out alert, we can get that information from the chief of police.
Okay, yeah, I don't think, I don't know if I read it wrong or not, but somewhere around here says that we're going to start receiving calls. And I'm not sure if we is the plural we with the police or not. But I don't think that the, we 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 function on a very limited employee base, I guess. So adding to it a hotline for that scam is is going to be too much. And that's it for me. Thank you very much, Paige. And yeah, I'll move for the report.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Yeah, on the questions, I want to mention to Paige, a good use of the app today with the information about the water taste and odor.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, that's one of the main reasons we got it.
Yep, that was really good, Dan.
I agree. Thank you for doing us to our inspiring spirit week, the municipal staff, May 25th, 28th. That was brought a little bit of Stellerton pride in the staff. And it's nice to see when the building to see that type of activity going on.
And Davy's Day, yeah.
Yes, thank you for that. To do a small ceremony on Davis Day. Do 11th, 11 a.m. at the Monitor's Monument. We'd like to thank Vern Ontario for doing the speech at that time. We all posted a video on Facebook. Come September, we're going to have a bigger one with the COVID restrictions are hopefully gone. We'll have a big ceremony there celebrating Dave's Day as well, time at the end of Version of Monitor's Monument. So we're looking for that September. Let Judith Hoig run as our guest speaker. So we're we're looking forward to that event come September. And like I already mentioned, we're getting reading new entrance signs at town. There'll be five new entrance signs. You'll see them pop in the fall. And like Deputy Mayor Lawan mentioned, they'll be the Stellerton colors, blue and yellow and white. So we're happy to see that come soon. Any other questions for Paige? I don't think so. With the motion ready to go, although the affairs are saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most carried Nancy. Thank you, Paige. By D, Blaine Murray, Town Engineer.
Hello, Councilman Worship. I just wanted to add or alert, Council, but it looks like you already were alerted by the app that we're starting to our yearly taste and odor issue in our water system is back. Both verified by complaints and by our sampling monitoring plan. It's showing up positive results for Jaws and MIB. So we'll continue to monitor that through the next several weeks. And then we'll be looking at trying to find a resolution to resolve and what treats this issue. Any questions?
No question, Blaine, but thank you very much on your diligence on that subject. Last year specifically was a big one. So, you know, right now, I know that we're just monitoring and testing. But the bigger thing would be to try and find a resolution, which you just mentioned that you will be working on. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Blaine. Just wanted to mention on the Engineering Public Works Report, thank you to you and the public work staff for doing some of the curb work in lowering our capital budget costs for the for Bridge Avenue and Park Street. Appreciate that.
Yeah, staff doing a good job of that.
Thanks again for the safety portion of your report. The capital is a lot shorter than previous years. I know it's that, but it's pretty much in process. We're a little bit tighter on funds this year. So capital isn't as long. And thank you for the detail on the water treatment plan. I think our water treatment plan is in much better shape than it was about a year ago. So that's doing a large part of your leadership. So thank you to you and all the people working the water treatment plant for the improvement and processing and quality. I know we're having some odor and taste issues, but that's not because of our plant specifically. That's because of issues that we have yet to address. So the water treatment plant is in a much better place. And thanks for that.
Yeah, staff are doing a great job with our treatment land. We change processes down there to reduce water usage and save money as well. So that's up to them.
Your worship, I got a question for Blaine. Curious to know, Blaine, that water fountain that's in Allen, Per, what's the history on that? That never worked since we've been on council, Your Worship.
Yeah, I don't know. I have to get the history.
I can provide a little bit of background if you want.
Yes, please.
So on the Community Bloom, this was one of the projects that was started in Community Bloom. We were very excited about it. And, you know, maybe a year or two after it was put in, it broke down, it was fixed, broke down again, it was fixed, and then the parts started to become scarce. And then because of the common occurrence of breaking down, it was kind of given up on. That is a brief history of that.
Can we take it up?
Theoretically, we should. The, I think the last time we talked, that was before COVID, tell you the truth. That, you know, we wanted to do some planting and flowers in there to make it a little bit more than just a waterfall. It'd be like a flower fall kind of thing. But unfortunately, since COVID, things have kind of shut down a little bit, tell you the truth.
Well, I think it's, when it was working, Simon, it did look really good.
I agree. I agree.
Maybe it's something that we can look at next year, but I I I feel that it, I mean, if it's there, why don't we try to get it going?
I agree.
So let me, if you want, you know, maybe I'll solicit Blaine's help as well. I can bring this back to the Community Bloom and will include Blaine in that conversation and see if there's any recommendation we can come back to council with.
Great. I would appreciate.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for Blaine's report. If there's no further questions.
I second.
Good move by Counselor Pence, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lawan. All those affairs must say aye. Contrary minded, most carried Nancy. Thank you, Blaine.
Thanks, everyone.
Five E, Noel Delory, Act of Community Living Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have submitted my council report, and I have a couple of things I would like to highlight, including our senior walking program and the summer day camp. We will be launching a senior walking program at the Pioneer Coal Athletic Field on June 73rd from 9 a.m. to 11 a.m. and every Wednesday following. I encourage our community members to come out and check it out as there will be music playing and it's a great way to get out and be active. More information regarding the senior walking program will be posted on our Town of Stellerton Facebook page. Furthermore, our summer day camp is quickly approaching as we are opening up for registration on June 21st and 22nd. Due to the restrictions, we are limiting our summer day camp to 10 youth participants for the first three weeks and 20 participants for the remaining five weeks. Due to these limitations, we will be holding our registration for one week at a time. Thus, June 21st and 22nd will be for week one, June 28th and 29th will be for week two, and so forth. We believe this will provide more families, more of an opportunity to register for our summer day camp. For more information, please, please stay tuned on, please stay posted on our Facebook page as further details we posted there. If there's any questions, I will be happy to answer.
I'd just like to point out a couple of things. The program coordinators, Lacy Sutherland for day camp. And the day camp counselors are Jenna Rorison, Madison Sample, Nick McGinnis, and Krista Cameron. I want to thank you, Noah, for being the taking on the vice chair of the Holland Region Recreation Coordinators Group. It's a positive step, and we appreciate that as part of the talent of being the vice chair there. Good idea on the weekly registration. I think that's a good idea. And I like to see that you're prioritizing Stellerton residents as well, since it's our town. I think they should go first. So that's a good idea. And besides that, good work on the dog park. Any other questions or comments in this report?
I do, Your Worship. Community playbox. Noah, can you expand a little bit on that? I'm not really familiar with it. And this is the first time I hear of it.
Yeah, of course. So a community playbox is, there's a lot of outdoor and recreational equipment donated by community members. Currently, we have none. I'm investigating getting a budget together and purchasing some equipment to kind of get the ball rolling. But this will be equipment able to be used by community members. All towns in Pictor County have their own, and we're putting them out all as one. But the the idea of is the idea behind community playboxes are having equipment and allowing people to use them free of charge. And it just, yeah, which will be seen in Stellerton here.
So what's the equipment exact? So I know, for example, in New Glasgow, beside the Rotary Park, I think there's like a bicycle and something else. Are we talking about something similar to that or something else entirely?
More so like, for example, ball gloves, baseballs, more smaller equipment that you fit in the box itself.
This was an initiative, sorry, Deputy Mayor. This was an initiative started by Active Picto County. There was some money left over in their budget. And so the communities decided that they would do this community playbox and put it in in an area of town like a playground or somewhere like that, that children go and be able to use this equipment, put it in and 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 use it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Noah, just a few more questions. The senior walking program in the Pioneer Coal Athletic Field, that's a great idea. The question is, are we still going to keep the senior or? The question is, are we still going to keep the senior or actually not senior, the community walk in the indoor soccer complex?
That is still going to be going, yes.
Perfect.
Which is allowing a, an outdoor space to kind of having a similar initiative.
That's good. Some people prefer outdoors, some people prefers indoors. On the summer day camp, you said it's limited to a maximum of 10 youth participant in the first three weeks. Would that be after the second phase of the New Scotia government has launched that once 65% or 60% of the population has gotten their immunization?
Yeah, so fingers crossed phase two should be happening this Wednesday. And that will allow for 15 people for summer day camps, including staff. That allows us to have our four camp counselors and 10 youth participants.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. On the dog park. Blaine, our engineer has mentioned that there's a conceptual plan that was drafted. But we haven't seen a copy of it yet. Would you be able to share that with us, please? And maybe it can be included on our website with the minutes or something.
So as far as the dog park, we, Blaine drafted a plot plan for the space up by the Pioneer Track. And that was sent to MLA Pat Dunn. And I'm kind of waiting to hear back from, from him. And currently I'm just trying to gather costs as it relates to developing a dog park.
Yes, we have, we have to get permission to use that space first.
There's no, there's no formal proposal put together. We're still, and it's still in the building stages. When we, I think when we get the, when we get the formal proposal and the plot plan, then we'll bring it back to council. But I think until then, you'll have, until we get it placed.
Okay, so keeping on the dark park, councillor Brian Knight mentioned that up until we get the approval from the, for the land. Do we have any idea when that would occur?
You're dealing with provincial government. They've been waiting for years now to get approval. Your guess is as good as mine.
Okay, so no idea. Okay, Noah, going back to the cost that you have provided. You have some 50 by 50, 80 by 80, 100 by 100 and 120 by 120 meters. And you have the 120 by 20 meters, 20 meters at 23,600. And that, after that, you said that it will be cut in half because one part of it will be for small dogs and the other part would be for big dogs. So I have a couple of questions on that. The first one is, if we were to go with the one dog, big dog park in, in that area. Do we need that small dog park in the ball, in the, in the soccer complex? And if we don't, then can we use some of the fencing that we have the, take it from there and give it to the bigger dog park? That's the first thing. And the second thing that I had a question about is that, that quotation that you have, does that include the spotlight that you have recommended? Or does it include the extension of the existing parking lot or is it just for fencing?
I think, I, I think going back to what I just said is, all of this here stuff is up in the air. There's nothing that's defined. And I, we would bring in proposals back like it's just, we don't have.
It's in the preliminary stages. Ryan, are you saying it's in the preliminary stages right now?
That's correct.
And that cost is for fencing, estimated fencing cost.
And that's what I was asking about. If it's just estimating a cost for fencing or there's something else is included. So since we are mentioning some worthless, I would like to see a gazebo there for owners that, because it's a very open area. So the owners that have the dog in, if they want to sit down in the gazebo in the shade while their dog are playing, I think that would be a great idea. If you can include it in your presentation, please, Noah.
I can certainly do that. Yeah.
Perfect. Last question. I was told that Westfall are moving their July 4th celebration into September. Sorry?
My first celebration.
Just sorry, July 4th. We, we moved to the States. I didn't know that. July 1st celebration to September. Have there been any discussions about moving our homecoming to September as well, by any chance?
Oh, we have some funds and I am investigating what we can do come September. Yes, that is. But no concrete plans, but I'm just trying to gather as many as ideas and I will, once I have some more information, I will present those ideas to council.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Noah.
I think, I think before any ideas go through council, you should go back to the homecoming committee to look into it. And they can make recommendations to the council.
Okay.
Perfect. I, so move the, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'm seconding.
I'll second it.
Move it up to Mayor LaWan, seconded by councillor Knight, all those affairs, my saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most curious answer. Thank you, Noah. Good work. Item six correspondent, six A letter from the Glasgow regarding the SPCA.
Back in the winter, Mayor McGilvery wrote letters to all municipalities that would be serviced by the new SBA, SPCA building that's going to be in the park. And we received a, just asking for their support and we received a letter back from the town of New Glasgow. On behalf of the town of New Glasgow council, I'm responding to the town of Stellerton and SPCA's funding request to provide capital financial assistance for the new building. Unfortunately, at this time, the town of New Glasgow is not able to provide funding support for your initiative due to the number of requests received this fiscal. And essentially no new revenue for the town to consider new funding requests. Thank you for considering the town in New Glasgow and wish you all the best in your fundraising endeavor, endeavors. Mayor.
Thank you for that. We'll move on to item seven, application for approval of the outdoor cafe.
Well, we'll take this one.
Okay, well, yeah, I understand you've got the proposal from the viewers for what they want to do this year. It's outside of the scope of the bylaw that was adopted last year. So this has to be a decision that's made by council. So I, I believe some of you may have already been talking to them about it, if I'm not mistaken. So you probably know what it's about. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that for now. And if there's any questions, by all means.
Thank you. So it is a little bit outside our current bylaw, but there's been changes to by law in other places because there are, there are modifications too because of COVID, the regulations regarding surrounding COVID restrictions. We did meet with the mirrors, a council member myself, as well as the chief of police. So it's going to be on the sidewalk only. It won't be in the intersection. It'd be sidewalk only. And the mirrors, if they have enough room there to make a go of it this, I mean, we really want to have something on our main street like that. So I think council in agreement with them. Let's, let's, let the rest of council speak to that.
I, I'd like to make a motion, Danny, that we, we let them go ahead and with their outdoor cafe for this, for this season only. Then we'll review it again.
I'll second that.
Moved by councillor Pence, seconded by councillor LaWan. And it is a one-year trial run, as councillor Pence mentioned. We'll see how it goes and we'll go from there.
All right.
Okay, all those affairs, my saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most curious answer. Thank you. I believe that was moved by councillor Pence, seconded by Deputy Mayor LaWan.
You're doing, I think, if I may, your worship, is just add that maybe you should treat the sidewalk as if it was now like a closed sidewalk and have signage put up that would tell people that and direct people to the marked crosswalks so they'll, they'll know how to safely get across the street and get past it.
Thank you for that, Roland. That's a good point. We are going to close the sidewalk. There'll be a little bit of adjustments to it. I guess Blaine would be the one responsible for getting a sign up there saying the sidewalk ahead is closed or whatever. But that is a good point because that will be a little bit of a change to main street pedestrian traffic for sure. So thank you for that, Roland.
Thank you. If there's anything else, may I be excused?
You're good to go. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight, committee of the whole reports.
The following recommendations are for council's consideration from the committee of the whole meeting virtually held on May 25th to any 21. Recommendation number one, committee of the whole, from committee of the whole, council approved the salt shed proposal from Robert Archibald General Contracting in the amount of $228,452.10, including HST, as it was the highest criteria scored and the lowest bid. And recommendation number two, on recommendation of committee of the whole, council approved the donation of $100 to the Picto County 4H.
Thank you.
So move.
I'll second that.
Moved by councillor Pence, seconded by councillor Knight. All those in favor, my saying aye.
All right.
Contrary minded, most curious answer. Thank you. Item nine, town hall roof and scaffolding, RFQ recommendation.
Yes, I'm looking to get approval for the, I guess, the request for quotation to do the town hall slope portion of the roof. And request, for the request for quotation for the state associated staging.
I move that we go with my intercom.
I'll second that. Oh, go ahead, Susan. Sorry.
By councillor Knight, seconded by councillor Campbell. The question, I'll read them out there. RFQ to install the metal roof, we had one bid, Mark McCausse Construction for 19,100. A separate RFQ was sent out for the scaffolding. Mark McCausse Construction bid 9200, Sancton Access bid 19,486. So the engineers recommending Mark McCausse Construction for both. This is moved and seconded. All those affairs, my saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most curious answer. Thank you. Item 10 is memorial bench dedication.
Yes, so we received through our commemorative bench and tree policy policy, a request to have a memorial bench dedicated to Joseph and Loretta McNeil. And they wish that bench to be placed in Olympic Park. And I just need council approval. It does adhere to the policy that was approved in July of 2018. So I just need council approval that that is okay to go in Olympic Park.
Go ahead, Ryan. Yeah, I, I just want to speak in that is, it, it's, if it's in the policy, why do we, why do we need a motion on it?
You need, you need a motion, councillor Knight, just on the location.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion to.
I'll second that.
Removed by councillor Knight, seconded by councillor Campbell. Any further discussion? So we say we're happy to see a bench put up in Olympic Park and the, in memory of Joe and Loretta, two beautiful people. So we're happy to see that happen. All those affairs, my saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most curious answer. Thank you. Item 11, recommendation police commission.
I guess I'll speak on that. Donnie Taylor is, Commissioner Donnie Taylor's term is up and he, he reapplied, but unfortunately provincial laws state that you're only allowed to serve so many terms. So Kevin Mason put in an application. Kevin's a good fellow, former RCMP officer. So I'm making a motion that, I'm sorry, I'll back up here. The police commission has already recommend, has already recommended Kevin Mason for the position. So I make a motion that we, we take Kevin Mason on on that position.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Knight, seconded by councillor Campbell. Is there any discussion on the issue?
Yes. I, Chairman Knight, I would say that Kevin Mason's going to be a real asset to the police commissioner of the town of Stellerton. He's got quite a, quite a good background for that position.
Thank you, councillor Pence. Like you said, one of the downsides of the whole commission right now is province wide, there's no representative. And we've been arguing and fighting or lobbying the government to try to make that happen. The government has said recently that what they're going to do is do away with that position in town. So there might be, hopefully there'll be another position out, but we're running one short here in Stellerton, as is all towns across Nova Scotia. Your information?
Thank you, councillor Knight. So it was moved by councillor Knight, seconded by councillor Campbell. All those affairs, my saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most curious answer. We welcome Kevin Mason to our police commission. We've already done number 12, the policy draft for social, Stellars and social media. We can defer that to commit, next committee of the whole. 13 is open forum. Anyone call to the open forum? Okay, next council meeting is July 12th, 2021, 5:30 p.m. start time. Hopefully in person at that point in time is our goal.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Yes.
And so I just asked for motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
Thank you, councillor Pence. Be adjourned. Thank you very much.